...in the community. My businesses, our taxes bring in eighteen thousand dollars a year to the tax base of this community. That's who I am. I've been here twenty-nine years in business. I'm a civic servant. I've been volunteering in many realms for all the years I've been here. Now that's me, and I'll tell you who I'm representing with what I say. I'd like to have the assurance that the mayor will not allow somebody to interrupt me or be rude to me this time. And I'd like to also ask that this be in the minutes. I represent, as a civic person in this community, doing my civil duties, I represent one thousand six hundred and twenty-three people who live here. And I appreciate if we're not sleeping or if somebody would pay attention to me. This is what happens in this room so often. People don't even look at you when you're talking. They're writing or they're not paying attention to you at all. Okay? I'd appreciate that if somebody would be present with me. One thousand six hundred and twenty-three people deserve you to pay attention to what I have to say. This is a book which has in it copies of all the petitions of the people, some of them who live here, some of who don't. I'm getting ahead of myself a little bit. During the summer of 2013, in response to city council's motion to demolish the pool, the Friends of the Verocla Swimming Pool commenced petitioning. The petition was an advisory petition meant to advise city council of the wishes of the community. A copy of the petition was delivered to city administrator John Severson prior to the commencement of the petitioning. A copy is included in this binder for the city's record. The petition said, "We, the below-signed individuals residing in the Verocla area by our signatures, do hereby notify the common council of the city of Verocla that we fully support the restoration of the city outdoor swimming pool and the 1936 WPA-built bath house located in our downtown. We also petition the Verocla City Council to suspend any decision which would require demolition of the pool and/or the bath house for a period of no less than two years. We further petition the council to participate in a working committee with our organization so that we may assist in research, grant writing, fundraising, et cetera, as needed, and so that we can attain our goal of restoration of the bath house and swimming pool." That's what the petition said. This is what the council's been aware of these two years. Results of the petitions. One hundred and eighty-three people were petitioners, okay? And businesses participated as well. Hundred and ninety-seven pages were returned with signatures. This book. One thousand six hundred and twenty-three local residents signed. Seven hundred and two residents of Vernon County signed, living outside of Verocla people. These are people who would use the pool. We should have some say. Four hundred and sixty-seven out of county signatures, people visiting here, signed. Some from here originally. Ninety-eight unidentified people signed, unidentified because they didn't leave their addresses. A total of two thousand eight hundred and ninety signatures asked this city council not to demolish the swimming pool and to engage in real, honest, productive conversation with the people who live in this community. Never has that happened. In fact, when I came here to present this exact same information a year ago, I was shut out, rudely shut out, and accused of things that no one would ever want to be accused of by this council. Two weeks later, I was removed from a volunteer position that I had held for fifteen years in vengeance for the fact that I believed in something that this council didn't believe in and weren't willing to listen to. Side note, it was told that we had been asked for copies of our petitions numerous times. Lied. Never, ever, ever happened. I'm the spokesperson for the group. I was willing to stand up here and talk for the group. I was never asked. I was ever, never, ever asked to be participating in any committee or group of people working on this project. Never. The public is not present with the decisions that are made in this city council. What you call "public meetings" are simply committee meetings between committees. They are not public participation meetings. If people want to go to them, they can go to them, and maybe they'll be willing and be able to say something. But it's not for them, and it's not for the issue that they're there for. It's for some other thing that they're there for. It is not true, public participation and public involvement. Now, I have education in some of this subject. I also have a degree in public participation. I know what public participation is. This is not it. What happened here last meeting was not public participation, is not, was not, and is wrong. This town needs to change. These things need to change. In addition to that, and I've included a copy of it on the back of this memo that I've sent you, is a letter from State Historical Society in which they give us a preliminary assessment. They say, "We believe the complex, being the pool and the bath house, may be eligible for listing in the state and national register of historic places. It would be eligible as a fine example of a WPA bath house and pool. The pool may be considered non-contributing if it is found to be substantially altered." That means removing the footprint of the pool. A second copy of this memo and petition will be provided to the Vernon County Historical Society for their archives. I want to know, I want the people of the future of this town to know how this happened and who was responsible when it did. The newspaper said that there were multiple public meetings. There have not been any, zero public meetings. Were they people allowed to come in and sit down and talk? Sure. About a tenth district, about conversations between the historical preservation commission? Sure, people can come in here, but they're not really invited in here. People are intimidated to come in this room. If you could, if these people can do what they did to me a year ago, with all the years of work I have done with this community, if they can do it to me, they can do it to anybody, and they know that. This council does not want public participation. They want to make their own decisions based on a few people's, eight people's decision to run this community without the input of the public. I'm done. Does anybody else have anything to say? And I'm passing, I'm going to pass this around, and I'm hoping that the city will keep it on hand, since nobody seemed to believe that they were real, that I was accused of that.
Celeste?
Hi, my name is Celeste Gibson. I'm a certified public accountant. I've had a business here in Verocla for seven years, just down the street. I've been in business in the area for twenty-five years. I'm one of the people that signed the petition to keep the pool open. And why I'm speaking tonight is to take exception with the announcement that has appeared on the city website. It says that there's been a series of public meetings in the last month regarding the pool. And I'm sorry, but I can't remember the public meetings. And I searched the website, I searched the calendar, I went back a couple months. I didn't find any public meetings on the calendar regarding the pool. Furthermore, I went back and read the minutes of this body, which are the only minutes available on your website, for the last three months, and I didn't find a decision to abolish the pool, to demolish the pool. And, you know, one of the reasons I was looking for that is, as a concerned citizen, I wanted to know when the decision was made, how it was made, who voted for it, and who voted against it on this body. So I'm calling on the city council to make this information public and to also retract any inaccuracies that are on your website regarding the series of public meetings that were held in the last month. Thank you.
Yes?
My name is Teresa Carey. I'm a retired attorney, a local mediator, and, you know, I've been involved in some of the Boulevard discussions, as some of you know. And, you know, I really don't know about all the politics that have been involved in what's been going on here, but one thing I do know is that people do really feel strongly about this pool here in this community. And even if there are reasons eventually found, and perhaps the council's already aware of plenty of reasons why the pool should be denied, given the conflict that it's generated in the community, I think it really behooves the council to hold public hearings on it and to really give it a good faith effort. I think what the petition was requesting, to take a couple of years to study the situation and take input from the community, and let the community, let the people who are passionate about it take steps to, yes, get grant money, get fundraising going, whatever it's going to take. I don't understand, and I have looked into the issues here somewhat, but I really don't understand why there's such a desire to just kind of put the kibosh on this at this moment in time, where another two years, okay, great, two years is another two years, and it'd be nice to just have it all done and over with and all the signs down and everybody just kind of melded back into the woodwork. But it's not going to happen without really giving the people an opportunity to be heard and to take steps to potentially save something that's of real value to them. And so I would ask the council to really reconsider what's going on here, be inclusive, even if the result ends up being the same. Two years in time, while it might be a pain in the neck and other ways, it's still worth it to try to salvage the goodwill within the community. And that's my request. Thank you.
I'm Mick Rockweiler. I used to be in business here in Verocla since 1972. My son owns the business now, and I'm out at the country club anytime you want to find him. I'll take any tips. I can remember sitting in you guys' chair. Terry, I think you're Recreation Committee Chairman, aren't you? When I was here, that's the job I had. And it was quite a while ago. Tim Lee was pool manager, and I think our budget was twenty-five thousand dollars. I'm not sure. Seventy years old, I get names and numbers screwed up, but the budget doesn't matter so much that we had a pool. We had a program, and we had a lot of kids in the pool daily. And I'm here because Fred Nelson talked to me and Thorson. Thor was at a meeting in La Crosse and couldn't come. I told him to come instead of me, because I don't enjoy this. It makes me a little nervous, and I used to stand, and I didn't expect all of these people. But Fred mentioned the meetings with you. He mentioned him and a group of people went to Westby Pool, he went to the Holman Pool, he went to Gaze Mills Pool, one other one close. Anyway, they figured out what needed to be done here. And Fred tells me he talked to you, Mr. Mayor. Fred talked, you've got to tell me when. I talked to Fred today.
It's been a few years ago.
Okay. And Fred said that he was for an outdoor pool, and like I understand, Terry would like it connected to the Phil Bigley Pool over at the high school. Well, I think that's where this community got confused. When that Phil Bigley Pool was made, Phil Bigley donated the money to this community for the farm kids so the farm kids could have swimming lessons during Fayed. And back then, in those days, two farm boys drowned. And that had to do with Phil donating the money to build the indoor pool over at the high school. Well, I think that was twelve years ago, but I'm not sure. I think you guys cut funding out for the outdoor pool here about twelve years ago. Does anyone know for sure? Well, my point, do you guys have a pool budget? Do you help fund the? Well, now, that's kind of nice. Westby has to have a pool budget, Gaze Mills has a pool budget, Holman, how does Verocla County not have an outdoor pool budget? How do you get by with that? You shouldn't get by with that. You're doing something wrong. And Fred and Thor want us to point out that Phil Bigley Indoor Pool that was built for the farm boys to come during Fayed was construed into, maybe we don't need to fix our outdoor pool, we'll use the Phil Bigley Pool. It's not working, and that wasn't the intent of the Phil Bigley Pool. That pool served, is serving its needs. The outdoor pool in Verocla is not serving its needs. We need to have a new pool. You don't fix the pool that's there, that's out of the question. You build a new one that's there because of the location. I talked to two trustees of the Eagles Club today. Now, one of you asked them if they would sell the land back to you to build a new pool. Not one of you. Not one of you, I asked them. Okay? I have to challenge, what's your name, Sir? I have to challenge you. I want you to know that Marvin Christiansen told me, if anyone challenged me, he said to remind you, not once did you mention you were going to use it for an outdoor pool. You didn't tell them the need that you wanted the land, and they wouldn't sell it to you with an open book. You had to say, "I wanted to build an outdoor pool," and you didn't do that, sir.
I don't have the authority to say that.
Well, that's why the Eagles Club didn't offer to sell you the land back.
I spoke at length with Vern Britt the Friday after the Fourth of July on that very subject. He told me, he runs the Eagles. He told me they were not interested in selling part of their property. They would sell all the property at once, but not part. He spoke about what the intended use was, that the pool was demolished. He spoke about what the Eagles were going to do with their part. That's where it was. So I did speak at length with him about, what, two weeks ago? And that was, so they cannot say that no one's spoken to them.
Not about the land being used for an outdoor pool?
Yes.
I just talked to Terrence Sisbrough, two trustees today.
I did not talk to Terrence Sisbrough. Or another trustee. I talked to Vern Britt.
Okay. We're talking about two different people. But as of right now, you're all under misconception. You think that the Eagles will sell back the land for twenty-two thousand dollars. I didn't say that. I said they're interested in selling you the land back with the building. Now, let's talk about that. They want, you guys haven't had a pool budget for twelve years. If you take a twenty-five thousand dollar pool budget that you should have had all along and didn't, that's three hundred thousand dollars you saved because you haven't had a pool budget for twelve years. Take that three hundred thousand, it'll take less, you don't need that much, buy the Eagles Club and that land back, twenty-two thousand five hundred. Now, you now solve many problems. You got a new library. What about, what about twenty Eagles have a wedding reception or a Super Bowl, and the people at the library don't have a parking spot in the city-owned parking lot by the Eagles Club? Solve that problem, tear down the Eagles Club, get your land back for the pool, and as Fred Nelson, I've got to get back to that conversation with you. As Fred Nelson says, you've got to have an aqua center. That is a kiddie pool, a pool where the, that's spraying water up the kids can go running through. And then when you tear down the Eagles Club, you got the extra land to do that. You saved the library parking problem, hopefully. You got parking now for the mom and dads who bring their kids in for swimming. Now, back to Fred Nelson, you told Fred Nelson that the state wouldn't license you, the city of Verocla, because you didn't have room to have a six-inch-deep pool to go to a depth of diving depth, correct? There wasn't room, the way it is now with the land.
Well, I think it was stated that when you build a new pool now, they want you to go from zero depth down. And, you know, when our pool was closed, our insurance company insisted that we take out the diving boards because the deep end was, I think, ten feet, it needs to be thirteen feet. And that's why the boards were taken out. That's why the boards were taken out.
Okay. Well, if you buy the Eagles Club and the land back, you got room to build the pool that you told Fred there wasn't room for. So, back to the people, Fred and Thor were in the group with Terry for building the pool next to the Bigley one, but after thinking it over, they want you all to know that they both are supporting the outdoor pool up here. So you all have been good, taking care of the city problems and so forth, repairing the streets, removing the snow. I know I can, you don't get credit when you should. I can remember sitting there and an attorney bought in a bottle of worms from the sewer plant discharge, and you run into problems people would never think you do. But this outdoor pool is a must for the city of Verocla, and it's, I think the word "revitalizing" is the wrong word. It's a new, smaller pool, as Thor and Fred say, in the same location, and the shower, the shower, the bath house. I'm not saying, I don't know enough about that, if that's in shape to rebuild or not, but that's a minor problem, isn't it? Leave it standing, build another one beside it. If it's a Historic Society site and you want it, build another one right by it. What's it cost to build a block building? So that isn't an issue either. The issue is a new, smaller pool in the same location. Please consider.
Hi, my name is Sarah Caldwell. I live on West Decker, and I've been here since the early nineties. And it's just really heartwarming to hear everyone speak about the preservation and resurgence of interest in our outdoor swimming pool. I am also in favor of keeping it downtown. I think it's really important to have children downtown and their parents downtown, and buy the libraries and ideal, just the whole situation feels really good to me. I just wanted to stand here and say that I am in support of postponing this decision to demolish the pool basin and to create a committee composed of businesspeople and citizens concerned about this situation and how we can move forward together in an atmosphere of trust and open communication to where we can all get behind this. Thank you.
My name is Joelle Howes. I've lived here since the early nineties also, and I had an office on Main Street for eighteen years. And my daughter and granddaughter have come back to Verocla to live, for my granddaughter to be raised here, and I come to speak for the children. In the last year, I've heard that Verocla is the poorest city in Wisconsin. Well, the children are the poorest of the poor. They are not represented here. They need to connect with outside. We are going into a time with this internet thing and everything, and everything, that their schools being cut off, extra programs cut off. It is very, very challenging. This has been an area that brought out beautifully formed children, beautifully formed adults that have been able to adapt and thrive out there in the world. I am so pleased with the results of things that I've seen as an educator here in the last twenty years. I beg you, please, please have a place where these children can be outdoors, where they can play, and just have a childhood. They need a place to relax during the summer, they need a place to be outdoors away from the electronics, they need a place to grow and thrive. And I don't see very many young fathers here. There are a few scattered that I know, but very few. Most of us have raised our children. Don't get so old in our heads that we forget what children are like and how much they need to have their freedom. If it's maintenance that bothers you, get some, hire somebody to maintain. It's not that big a deal to take care of something like this for the children. It's the future of this place, if this is to have a future at all. Thank you.
I'll speak as a mother of young children right now. So I grew up in a city in Canada.
What's your name?
My name's Emma Nichols, and I've lived here for almost eight years now. And when I moved here, I was so excited about living in Verocla, and I actually didn't take note to the fact that if there was an outdoor pool or not. And until I had children, it didn't really hit me because it'd always been a given that it would be an option for my children. My mother was a single working mother, and during a lot of my years growing up, the place for me to be that was safe, that was surrounded by people who cared and were involved, was the public swimming pool. So I would get on my bike, I'd ride to the swimming pool, and I had the community of friends. I was old enough to take care of myself, you know, and my basic needs, but I also needed to be surrounded by people that were involved in my life and participating in my life when my mom had to work. Now, I'm a homemaker now, but to me, that is so essential, and I want to echo what Joelle's saying. The challenge I'm having as a mother now is to find recreational activities for my children during the summer, in this town particularly, that are good worthwhile alternatives to sitting in front of a TV or the internet. And that's a challenge that's different in this generation, and there are risks for children being in front of computers all the time. There's things on computers that are not always healthy, and it's a real concern for me. And I want to be able to send my children out, say, "Get out of the house, go do something." And if they're on board or whatever, that they can go do something that I have no fears about, concerns about. So as a current mother, I think of young children, because I feel like I'm probably one of the younger ones here, swimming was also, growing up, a way that I literally got, you know, four to eight hours of exercise every day, growing up in the summer. I mean, I was just, I was healthy, I was strong, and I think that anybody who's been a parent realizes that's a desire for their children, to be active in their bodies. And if we're not giving children an opportunity to have these sorts of, having infrastructure for them to do this as a town, I worry that as a community, we're neglecting them. And so I just, I really, what I'm trying to convey is that there is, I realize that there are budgets, I realize that there's due process, I realize we all have to participate and find the best solution, whether it's rebuilding the pool or building a new pool. But for me, this is an emotional issue because I care about my children. I am a homemaker, and I'm so not working, but I have plenty of friends who are single moms, and they're in this boat, and I want to see their children thrive as well. So thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Rita Burford, and I have lived here my whole life. Myself, I am not a swimmer because I was on the farm raising tobacco, so we didn't have time to go swimming. But my children, when they grew up here, that was the best babysitter we had all summer. They rode their bikes, and they were with their friends, and they came home for lunch, and they went back to the pool, came home for dinner, went back to the pool for family swimming, and it's like, yes, they're out here, they're safe, they're taken care of, they're with their friends, it's healthy. They didn't sit in front of the TV, and they didn't do everything the children do today. But we really miss it. Our grandchildren come now, and we have to go to La Crosse or somewhere else to take them swimming, because they love to go swimming. So I think it's a need that we do need.
My name is Kim Schotzen, and I've been here since 1999 on Jefferson Street. We came here when the pool was fully intact and had all of the benefits that you're describing for our young children, and appreciated so many other things about this small town, including the ice skating rink and so many things. I think you all here have an opportunity to recognize that Verocla, and I know you know that, but Verocla has such an amazing potential. and I know you know that, but Verona has such an amazing potential in these modern times when economic interests take away the small-town possibilities in so many Midwestern towns. Verona hasn't, that hasn't happened here fully. I think the potential for it to happen is there. And I just hope that you will, that, you know, the, the arguments that Mr. Rockweiler brought to me indicate that there's enough questions still to warrant starting over, start a new discussion about it and take into account all the things that you gentlemen and ladies are aware of about the needs of the city and all the things that the community is asking for as well. So, thank you for your attention.
You paid ninety thousand dollars for Smonton's Lumberville Lumberright here. Go buy Eagles Club, please. It'll take care of many of our problems and build a pool over there, a smaller one. We don't need that big of a one that we had, but please do that. For the county seat not to have a swimming pool budget, you guys have- It's, I'm beside myself to think that you guys think you can go without a swimming pool. Here's your chance, do it.
And don't spend money to demolish what's there already. Don't put your money and don't invest your money into demolishing something until the decision has really been made by the people's involvement. Don't spend money to maintain it. Don't spend money to put landscaping in. Keep what's there now. It's been sitting there for twelve years. What has it hurt? And it's going to sit there another five. If we don't, if we can't make it happen in five years, fine, then dandy. But don't spend money, all the big money it costs to demolish that pool now.
My name is Sue Nearest. I just want to say a couple of things before you move on. We moved to this community in two thousand and one in the middle of the summer, and I didn't know anyone. And the outdoor pool saved my life, not just my kids. My kids were there every day, they loved it, they swam. But that's where I started connecting with members of the community. And I was doing a little bit of reading online recently. And there's a movement in the United Kingdom called Community Matters. And I just love it. You know, I put little quotes around it in my brain and I've been carrying that thought with me, community matters. So I'm a court reporter by trade. I work here in town locally, just recently, in the last three months, but I was working in La Crosse. And I love this little community. And we've raised our three children here. And it's a beautiful, beautiful place, as Kim said, with so much potential. So much potential. I have nothing against Bigley. My daughter was a lifeguard at Bigley. One of my sons is also a certified lifeguard. But Bigley serves a purpose that the outdoor pool can't serve. And all you have to do is go to Bigley and stand there for a couple of hours and you'll see. You know, very early morning, lap swim. And then the lessons start and it's all very regimented, lesson come, lesson, you know. And it's not a place-